Let me just say good afternoon and happy Sunday to all of us. We are called out today, Sunday. When Emeka was apologizing to you, I felt he was making a mistake.
Yes.
Because like doctors, journalists work twenty-four hours of the day. And therefore, whether it is Sunday, whether it's Saturday, whether it is day or night, we are on duty. And I'm happy that, following a very short notice, many of you are here. And I want to appreciate your support and your commitment to healthcare delivery in Nigeria. Today, we needed to put some records right. Lies told over time without being challenged to be taken as the truth. And today, we call this press briefing to inform Nigerians what should be and what ought to be. And it's about the Juhasu's outburst, time for caution. You all know that Juhasu is joint health sector union. This is a response to the deals following at the public hearing on Monday, the first of February. Five deals, health-related deals, were taken by the Committee on Health. And that is unprecedented in the history of the National Assembly. And instead of appreciating this, we have some charlatans who decide that they want to discredit the National Assembly. Totally unacceptable, totally uncultured, and unruly. Therefore, I want to say that it has come to our knowledge that a group of misguided individuals acting under the amufos on registered bodies to health unknown to law are help-bent blackmailing the Senate of the Federal Republic of Nigeria and particularly the Chairman of the Senate Committee on Health over matters that could not logically, that they could not logically advance during the transparently managed Senate hearing, a public hearing on the fifth, on the five deals, health-related deals, held on the first of February, 2021. I must say that it's shameful that this group of individuals who are, who were given all the opportunities to make their views known at the Senate public hearing, but chose to express their vacuousness have decided to take to the media and public street to unfairly malign the medical profession that gave birth to them in the first place. More ridiculous is the laughable threat to go on strike over a matter that purely, that purely professional and parliamentary for which they clearly lack the understanding and knowledge. The true situation of the MDCR repeal and reenactment bill. On Monday, the first of February, the Senate of the, of the National Assembly, the Senate of the National Assembly of the Federal Republic of Nigeria held a public hearing on the Medical and Dental Council of Nigeria repeal and enactment bill, SB four eighty, and four other bills. SB four eighty seeks to repeal and then reenact the Medical and Dental Practitioners Act, cap M eight, laws of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, twenty, two, two thousand and four, which was enacted, which was enacted by decree twenty-three of nineteen eighty-eight and amended by decree seventy-three of nineteen ninety-two. It's over getting to forty years. The effort of the Senate is timely, appropriate, and necessary to bring the regulation of medical and dental, and death history in Nigeria up to date with the rest, with respect to advancement and development in health sector nationally and internationally. The Nigerian Medical Association wholeheartedly welcomes the bill. That's a statement. The Nigerian Medical Association wholeheartedly welcomes the bill. Nigerian Medical Association is happy that the bill seeks to reinforce the perpetuity of the Medical and Dental Council by making it immune to frequent and unnecessary disruptions through dissolutions each time there's a change of government. The bill also makes it easier for the Medical and Dental Practitioners Judiciary Tribunal to try cases of professional misconduct against doctors, and I mean doctors, in a timely manner. It has, it also makes provision for more realistic sanctions against doctors who are found guilty by the Judiciary Tribunal. The current state of affairs is such that cases linger for years due to frequent dissolution of council and Judiciary Tribunal. And when the tribunal finds a doctor guilty of professional misconduct, the Exant Law does not permit it to suspend such a doctor for more than six months. The next most severe sanction is eraser from the medical register. That means removing the name from the medical register so that he doesn't practice medicine for life. We support the clear delineation of the function council in the bill. The passage of the bill and assent will set, will settle the unnecessary confusion, interprofessional rivalry, acrimony, and friction in the health sector. You all know what has become. Juhasu's pensions for blackmailing Nigerian doctors and governments at any slightest perceived opportunity. Following the well-organized and well-conducted public hearing of the, on the five unprecedented health-related bills, it was surprising to note that the, to note the outburst and apprehension over the provisions of the bill by members of professions allied to medicine, professions allies to medicine and dentistry. That statement is very clear and will give you reasons why they are allied. In Nigeria, under the aegis of an amufos and amufos body called Juhasu. We believe that these feelings are misguided and emanated from misunderstanding and ignorance of, of, of the purpose of the bill among these professionals and mischieved by a few of their leaders who exploit the misunderstanding and ignorance among their members. A dispassionate and ponderous reading of the provision of the bill would make it very clear to all reasonable persons who only seek to advance themselves without causing unnecessary acrimony and rankle in the health sector and health system that the bill is well-intended and in tandem with contemporary medical and data practice. The long title of the bill states very clearly that it's a bill to repeal the Medical and Dental Practitioners Act, nineteen eighty-eight, and enact Medical and Dental Practical Bill to establish the Medical and Dental Council of Nigeria for the regulation and control of medical and dental profession, medical and data profession. For further clarity, section two of the bill states that the provision of this bill shall apply to the professions of medicine and dentistry and all persons who are authorized to practice as medical practitioners or dental surgeons under this bill. It is therefore surprising that anyone would claim that the bill seeks to regulate any other health, healthcare professionals. The provision of S one, subsection nine, being banded around by some people as an attempt to regulate other professions is noticeably clear in its provision that it is about medical practitioners and data surgeons. It states very clearly that one of the proposed functions of the bill, of the council, would be making regulations for the operations and management of clinical diagnostic centers for the practice of pathology or and radiology and other branch of medicine and dentistry determined by council, provided that the regulation provides, I mean shall provide for fully-registered medical practitioners to manage the diagnostic centers. These are doctors. Please note that they provide so there because it's very, very important, medical doctors. The council's regulation would only apply as it is related to registered medical practitioners and nobody else. That is doctors and dentists. It did not say council shall make rules for any other profession. And this is very clear. Doctors practice medicine and do not seek to practice pharmacy, medical laboratory science, radiography, or any other profession or occupation or persons who are not qualified to be registered as medical doctors and data surgeons. Doctors practice medicine, not medical laboratory science, nor pharmacy. While we may agree that the title apocracy, apocracy is not a, a title generally used by doctors, we find it amusing that someone would propose that doctors in Nigeria should cease to be using the title doctor. You all know that even doctor is in the Bible. One of the three professions in the Bible. The clergy, the lawyers, and the doctor. No other one, no other one in the Bible. And Bible is an instrument that you all know, the powers of the instrument. Doctor is universally known as the title of practitioners of medicine. That is true. They claim that the provisions of section forty-two, subsection one of the bill excludes other persons like holders of Peds and doctor of veterinary medicine, ETC, from legitimately calling the sex is misconstrued. And it is an, an attempt to incite the public against medical doctors. While paragraph B of the subsection, of the subsection, of that subsection states no person other than a registered medical practitioner shall take or use the title of physician, surgeon, doctor, or associate of medicine, medical practitioners, or apocracy. Paragraph C of that subsection makes it, makes an exemption for those other than medical practitioners who have legitimate and reasonable reason to use the word doctor. Everybody wants to be a doctor. In any case, the provision of section forty-two of the bill is the same as that of the Exant Laws of the Federal Republic of Nigeria in subsection seventeen, subsection one of the Medical and Dental Practical Act, cap eight, cap M eight, laws of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, which is also similar to the provision of the expanded Medical and Dental Practical Act of nineteen sixty-three. We are not aware of any holder of PhD, DVM, or doctor divinity, or any other similar degrees which give them reasonable and legitimate ground to use the title doctor who have been prevented from using so. We do not, we don't have that time because as doctors we are very busy and we don't look for flimsy excuses and to, to make. The law only seeks to protect members of the public from quacks, crooks, and charlatans who deceive them, who deceive members of the public into thinking that they are medical doctors. They are not. I used to be, when we were medical students, we used to have a, a doctor who was a physiologist. You say I'm doctor this, but not medical. But in these days, everybody whose cause is of a doctor seeks to be a doctor, a medical doctor. It's not, not the same. Unfortunately, due to the failure of the law enforcement and pre, uh, pro, uh, cultural authorities in our country, quacks and charlatans are brazenly and openly referring to themselves as doctors despite the existence of the law against it. The complaint that subsection, that section forty-five, subsection, uh, subsection three E seeks to enable a doctor and nurses to solve the duties of pharmacists is misconstrued, especially when, when viewed on the background of the proceedings forty-five, thirty D. The two paragraphs read, only a registered pharmacist shall dispense medicines prescribed by a registered medical practitioner or dental surgeon. Nothing in the foregoing shall preclude registered medical practitioner or dental surgeon or registered nurse under the supervision of a doctor or dentist from providing medicines in the absence of registered pharmacists. It is clear, therefore, that the deal, while upholding the right of the registered pharmacist, only seeks to enable doctors and nurses use medications on patients in the course of their duties, where there is very reasonable and conceivable, uh, and disconcertable not to have a pharmacist around. For instance, the use of anesthetic agents in the theater and emergency drugs, the incentive, the intensive care unit and emergency room or in the ward. We do not need a pharmacist to do that. It doesn't. And that is very clear. So it's not to say that they were supping the powers of the pharmacist. That is conferred on the doctor. The Nigerian Medical Association believes that the Medical and Dental Council of Nigeria repeal and enactment bill is intended to further strengthen the Medical and Dental Council of Nigeria in regulating the medical and data practice to protect the public by ensuring that registered medical practitioners and dental surgeons are competent persons who practice safe, ethical, and reasonable medicine. We fully support the bill and call upon members of the, of the professions allied to medicine and dentistry and members of the public in general to support the bill for the advancement of the quality of care of Nigerians. Senator Ibrahim Oloruebe and members of his committee performed excellently well as they exhibited maximum degree of decency, decorum, and exemplary leadership, even in the face of unruly behavior of Juhasu members in the, in the hall. Juhasu's desire was more to instigate a crisis by the influence of unguarded threats to the nation, to the nation's health and public servants who carry out their duty on a daily basis. Members of the NMA salute the patient's understanding, maturity, and wisdom of the chairman and his very well-organized team for the courage and wisdom in making, in managing the public hearing very, very well. It has never been done like that before. We have never had five deals all related to health that had gone for public hearing and came out excellent. In fact, the, the score for them was excellence. And as doctors, as a lecturer myself, I, 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 I mark scripts and I know what excellence is. So they handle this very maturely and clinically decorum. We appeal to the general public and the National Assembly to ignore the dying voice of the paranoid Juhasu who have sustained their attacks on medical Nigerian doctors purely out of jealousy and envy to get through the back door what they could not achieve while in school. I tell you that three-quarters of all that read medical laboratory science, pharmacy, and they know that wanted to read medicine to begin with. But no, no, everybody cannot read the medicine. We believe that we, people should grow in their profession. Stay on your lane. I still my lane. We are aware that many nurses, pharmacists, medical laboratory scientists have led the profession to read medicine. And there are doctors today. In fact, we had a situation where a former nurse who became a doctor was a minister of health. And we have no qualms about that. So anybody who wants to read medicine should go to medical school. The schools are open and there's a vice chancellor. I am a vice chancellor and I can actually admit them if they are qualified to read medicine. NMA wishes to invite Juhasu members to join forces with the medical and dental practitioners to improve the health circumstances of our people rather than threatening to go on strike for the wrong reason, for the wrong reasons at any slightest flimsy excuses. I think that is uncalled for. Decorum must prevail. Medicine is, is not, is not marketplace. And that's why you can see that medical doctors are not members of the trade union. We are a profession. A profession with maximum decorum, a noble profession for that matter. Finally, I wish to appeal to governments and good-spirited individuals to advise members of Juhasu and their cohorts to go to the medical, to go to medical school to read the medicine to become medical doctors or forever leave doctors and medical profession alone. They should leave doctors alone. They should stop expressing their frustration towards a very intelligent group and members of the noble profession of human medicine. Can say I say human medicine. I didn't say medicine because we have vet medicine, talking of human medicine. But we accommodate all because we are leaders of the health team. But they should not attack us further. It's not instigate us to any action that may be very unpleasant. We are a profession that is noble, even the armed forces. A, a doctor in the armed forces can maybe, can never be a chief of army staff. He's a support staff. In the plane, you have a pilot. We have cabin crew. If, even in, if you go to a captain's office, you get messengers. There's nothing peculiar about, about hospital and it's, and the provision of health services. So when they say, in fact, the one I'm not answering now, the one that is laughable, you know, in the armed forces, you know, the number of other ranks? Do you know that the number of other ranks are more than the officers? Very good. So when they say they are more than us, they should be more than us because we are the highest, we are the pyramid. You get my point? We shouldn't be too many. Even if there are very many, the pyramid is like this. So obviously, we stand up there. And do you think that the number of messengers, the doctors should be, the number of doctors and messengers should be the same? Okay. Now, I, I'm just answering that one. The last one on the, before I answer. I will not start, I will not answer the questions in any order. It depends on what comes to my head. Now, the truth of the matter is that this crisis is a crisis of envy. I mean, we've been working together for a very long time. Very, I worked, I had, I also practiced in medicine in the United Kingdom before I came back to Nigeria. Everybody's on his own lane. Everybody, you know, where, it doesn't matter whether you are a crongomor, even as a gynecologist, as a gynecologist, which I am. If I'm not a cancer specialist, I have to refer my patients to a cancer specialist. I'm an endocrinologist. We know these divisions clearly, even in Europe and America. This thing we are talking about asked Juhasu to go to armed forces and say they want to lead the medical team. That day, they will be drooped and they will leave. So there is order. The only thing that Nigeria is a lawless country. If you go to the United States, go and find out the practice of medicine. Is it that we don't have nurses there? Is it that we don't have medical laboratory scientists there? We have people. Everybody stays on, and you work together. Even when, as a medical student, we used to have what we call clinical meetings. Nurses, medical laboratory scientists, pharmacists. We all come together to review the case for a patient. These days, everybody thinks it's, in fact, it started in nineteen eighty-one. I was an S H O then. When Olabode, who was the secretary of, executive secretary of, of nurses, a nun at the time, said that there are two generals and they are subject to no control. We are not controlling anybody. That is the problem we face. Now, the issue of resolving the crisis, we have, in fact, we start, my predecessor did a lot. We have a committee now in the NMA that looks into interprofessional rivalry. So as leaders, we have set up that, but you see, they are very dishonest. We'll finish meeting, have photographs, exchange, please and please. They go and then start digging a taproot so I can fall. I say it with all sense of responsibility. I've been in medicine in, in NMA for over forty years. So I know the progression. I can tell the history of NMA. We will start, my predecessor, Professor Faridil, did a lot. He met with it and we are committee. But in the end, they would say that they would go and, in fact, we've carried them along for too long. There is nothing that we do. If you listen to my press briefings, I say doctors and other health professionals. I never say doctors alone because we are one. But the fact that we are practicing in one place does not mean that I should not practice my medicine. That is the problem we face. Everybody, you see, everybody wants to be a doctor. I don't, I, I chose to be a doctor. In fact, I chose specifically to be a gynecologist. And it is not by anybody's prompting. It's my own mind. So if today you are a medical laboratory scientist, you find yourself there, you decided to go there. Please stay there and make your progress. Rather than saying that, can you imagine anybody in his right and you say that a medical doctor should not call himself a doctor? Well, who is a doctor then? In fact, once you call yourself a doctor, the first feeling of anybody that you are medical, that is the truth. So today, you see, even strangers are driving away the landlords from their houses. If we don't, if we are not called doctors, who should we call a doctor? Now, a challenge, a signing of reports. Let me tell you, have you ever seen a pharmacist, a medical laboratory scientist, a radiographer, go to court to defend a case? Have you ever seen, it is all the consultant, even if the consultant or a medical officer in charge? That is the authority and power of the doctor. It is not given to him by all these charlatans of today. You, you cannot go to court, go to court and try it. Let me cut your leg and you go and do a, no, not to cut completely so that you don't say I'm cutting your leg. I would, I would give you illustrations, teach it, and take me to court. And then the medical laboratory scientist threw the blood and did the test. And pharmacist gave the drug. Who is going to be called? It's only the, it's the doctor that must appear. Any other person will not be allowed. So the issue of signing, yes, the sign report, but more the counters counter sign by pathologist, not the medical laboratory scientist. Doctors are not medical laboratory scientists. They are pathologists in pathology, in mobile anatomy, pathology, in chemical pathology, pathology, hematology, pathology, microbiology. They are not medical laboratory scientists. Medical laboratory scientist is that you, the, the doctors take blood and send, or what they, what we call samples and send to the lab. The doctor is the interface. The lab does its own, sends the result. Do you know that me, as I am, even as a resident then, if I look at a result and it's faked, I'll tell you it does not conform to the clinical condition of the patient and I'll reject it and I'll ask for a repeat. Are you aware of that? That's the duty of the doctor. A doctor interfaces the result with the patient's clinical condition. And that is the reality. So a, a patient, a, a medical laboratory scientist does not own a patient. The patient is owned by the doctor. And where their consultant is the consultant in charge of the case. That's why if you go to a hospital, you would see the files, the file, patient file, you see Professor Uja. And any condition, no other consultant can even touch that file unless I permit. That is medicine. And you need to understand this. No other person unless, but that is what we call collaboration, you know, cross-review. We can review, I can seek the opinion of my, of my colleague. This is the case I'm having. Can we discuss it? This is what I think. What do you think? In, in, when it is to improve the care, but not to soften my authority and power. And you see, when the, those of you who are in health correspondence, when WHO and, and the Freedom Minister said we, there is tax shifting. I'm one of those. I even argued it to South Africa. I say it's not tax shifting. It's tax shifting and tax sharing. If I was preparing a pursuit to me before and I have trained you to do a pursuit to me, that doesn't mean I'm shifting my tax to you. I'm sharing my tax with you. And I argue with WHO and I can do that because I know, I have the knowledge. So it's not what people say that necessarily is true. And when I said it, the WHO put a slash, tax shifting and tax sharing. And that is what it is in the books because I confronted them. I'm sure probably other people would have done the same, but the one I did is what I know. So the reality is that the doctors counter sign that report. Ask, in fact, I, I can, I don't want to name anybody, but there was somebody who was practicing in Britain. And the issue of counter signing, there is no result that will go to the patient's file without being countersigned by the doctor. If it's, if it's a pathologist, if it's a mobile anatomist, you will sign. And you see, the pathologists, they don't practice medical laboratory science. They practice pathology, either in hematology, medical microbiology, chemical pathology, and the rest. So then there are two different things. The one is doing the test and submit to the doctor who now synchronize the, the clinical condition with the lab condition and then make his informing decision. That's not to say that we say we are, we are all alone. No, we are not. It's collaborative, but everybody should know where he belongs. Well, I don't know whether you know the composition of Juhasu. In a hospital, everybody else apart from a doctor is a member of Juhasu. So if you are a clerk, you are Juhasu. So if you are a clerk, you are Juhesu and the Juhesu, they say they want to be uh. Uh no C M Ds, have you ever seen where messenger have become a C M D? So they recruited them to incite them against the doctor, otherwise what has the messenger or clerk got to do? With being a C M D or, or minister. And quickly to say that the doctor has never objected to non-doctors being ministers. Doctor has never looked around and find out, the only, the, the other way around is that any time doctors are, are nominated. Juhesu will stand up and say they are also working the hospitals, so is everybody working the hospital, even in the armed forces. If you are not, if you are, if, if you are not a combatant, you cannot be an army chief. That is the truth. And if you are not, look at all the, 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 the recent appointments of service chiefs. The army chief is a combatant, the, the, the air chief is, is a pilot and the navar chief is a sailor. There is no way any other person, and there are very many in the armed forces, very intelligent people, including doctors, in this case, they are support staff. So what is all this thing, the doctor has, look, we had um, uh, you know, Adelui Lee, Adel, Adelui Adelusi. Who was a pharmacist, did you hear anybody, any doctor say he shouldn't be? No, um, the hydrologists you mentioned, nobody's. Uh, yes, uh, uh, Alambo, we cooperated with them. But each time a doctor is made as if we are alien to medicine. I mean, it is, it is, it is, and of course you can see the wisdom of the president. The wisdom of the president. The first, they carry pla- placards, they didn't stop anything. When they came back, the same thing, because he knows, you, you see, I don't want to tell you all the story, he knows who is in charge. But if in the wisdom of the president decides that a, a messenger should be minister who will go through, obey the person. That is, that is, that's leadership. We are not against anybody rising to any level, what people should not do is not to look over our shoulders. They should stay in their own lane. And you know that minister, material position is a political position and that's why we are calling for surgeon general. Which we will strongly, strongly, strongly pursue. Because eh, 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 a minister is a political position. And that is the truth. But we are not against anybody becoming a minister. Journalists could become ministers, it's only in the. Oh, yes. No, why not? You see, the, I, I'm just telling you, it doesn't matter a protestation, but you see, the, it, it is only um, uh, what do you call it? Minister of Justice. That must be a lawyer, that's the only one in the constitution. That's the only one in the constitution, and of course you know why, because lawyers were the one making constitution, so charity begins at home, you know, um. You know, so that is not an issue at all to us. Um. So we, we don't undermine any regulatory or direct regulatory agencies, we say this is the law, how can a law. Made or been proposed to protect patients and doctors. Who will be made to undermine other regulatory agencies. They need to read this, you see, all these things are either daydreaming or a perception, I know perception is not fact. It's the regulation of, of the practice of medicine and dentistry. He didn't say it will be a regulation to pr- to regulate eh, to regulate nurses or pharmacists, no, it's not. And please, please plead with them, it is not too late to go to medical school. And when you come to medical school, when you finish, you decide what you want to do, but if you are a pharmacist, a medical laboratory scientist, a not. In fact, let me tell you, there are only two professions known in the hospital. The, the, the nurse and the doctor. Every other person is adjacent. This is true, a pharmacy is not a dispenser, we don't train pharmacists to go and be dispensers, they should go to the industry. And produce drugs and medical men for us. Not being dispensing and you see, that is not, that, that's not, that's not what a pharmacist is trained for. A pharmacist, you ordinarily, eh, pure water yourself, we can't get in a teaching hospital, which is something that pharmacy should be producing. Ivy fruits, pharmacy should be producing in the hospital if they want to stay in the hospital, but their area of operation is in the industries. That is the truth. But you see, we are all in the hospital because everybody felt that probably doctors are comfortable, we are not comfortable, if we are comfortable. If I, people will not, Nigerian doctors will not be going out, as I'm talking to you down their way out. Because the environment of practice is very harsh, that's the truth. They want to go and improve themselves, they want to go and have facilities to practice medicine. That's why each time you leave, you just release a, a doctor to go out, he's, you make waves. Because one, we, we train them properly here. They are properly trained. And when they go out, look at the, the percentage number that passed that lab is enormous from Nigeria. If they are not properly trained, they will be failing. So we are not regulating anybody. Now the issue of dialogue, like I said, we have, we have, we have a committee chaired for interprofessional rivalry resolution. But they are, we are not, they are not honest. They are not honest. And even, I, I'm sure many of you were at that public hearing. Three people, the senate president, the chairman of um health committee. And the high chairman, acting chairman of the House Committee on Health, everybody said, look, we must have peace.